And salute and honor America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Fatakante.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A special honor of business, spotlight on excellence, the eight years of service of Dr. Carla Brooks-Bear to the Lowell Public School System. Mr. Panad, is someone here to...
The record would reflect that there's a unanimous vote by all committee members electing Dr. Carla Brooks-Bear as the next superintendent of the Lowell Public Schools.
I'm delighted to be here. Thank you very much. I very much appreciate the welcome, the support, and the opportunity to serve Lowell as its next superintendent of schools. It's really thrilling for me. I was thinking on the drive up that I... It was November that I was writing my letter to the Blue Ribbon Search Committee to make my application to Lowell. And I was enthusiastic then about the possibility of the opportunity to serve Lowell. I'm even more enthusiastic today. I've learned some really wonderful things about Lowell in these last months. My hope is that this is a city that I knew before and I now know even more that has been determined to beat the odds, to bring itself up and beat the odds and be reborn as a city. It's my hope that I can build on the work of Superintendent Sappatseris and the work of the educators and the citizens of Lowell to bring the schools to the next step so that the city kids of Lowell also may beat the odds.
In July of 2000, Carla Brooks-Bear came to Lowell with a lifelong passion for educating children and the experience to move our schools forward toward excellence. In the past eight years, there have been innumerable accomplishments, both large and small. And as such, we cannot hope to do justice to all of those today. However, we'd like to offer you a glimpse at some of those milestones that reflect her overall success in Lowell. One of her first tasks was to take the pulse of this school system, its parents and community. In the early months of her tenure, she met with individuals throughout the city to find out what was working, what needed improvement, and what aspirations Lowell held for its schoolchildren.
When I came, I had the opportunity through that summer and into the fall to meet with a lot of people from within the schools and outside of the schools. I think I totaled it up at the time. I think I had met by October, I had met with 300 people ranging from one-to-one conversations to groups of as many as 15 or 20 people. They ranged from staff at all levels of the school system, members of the Citywide Parent Council, people connected to some of the businesses in the city, some of the city political leaders, a variety of civic leaders. I met with clergy, of course, the city manager, a variety of people. Asking, trying to learn about Lowell and also asking them a lot of questions about what they hoped and dreamed for the schools. And so that was the origin. I really tried to take what I heard and translate it into a document that captured in some way the aspirations of the city for its schools. And then brought that forward to the school committee. And with a few edits suggested by the school committee, it became the blueprint.
In reaching toward the goal of classroom excellence, she established both the CoStep program for paraprofessionals and a new teacher academy. The teacher academy is an induction program, which is now a standard part of every teacher's first three years in Lowell. It serves to enhance their teaching skills and support them in the classroom while orienting them towards Lowell's particular needs and goals. The result has been to retain many more of our teachers while unifying the methods they use in the classroom.
We were fortunate enough to secure a $1.6 million grant from a private foundation headquartered in Boston so that we could launch a teacher induction program. Historically, teachers new to cities in particular fail at an alarming rate and bail out of the profession. It's a huge turnover of new teachers. And the bottom line, the results so far, is that this past year, we retained 87% of the 124 teachers who were here for their first year in Lowell and 92% of the teachers that were here for their second. So we know that that program is working.
As time passed, our school's staff, students, and community rallied together around this set of attainable goals, and measurable progress began to show. The superintendent's enthusiastic belief in the work our district was accomplishing and her dedication to Lowell became an unwavering guiding force.
I need to confess to you that I tried to steal your superintendent of schools. A couple of months ago, I tried to recruit her as Deputy Commissioner of Education. Now, there are good reasons why I did that. For one thing, she's smart as heck. You always surround yourself with smart people. She's smarter than I am. She's had great experience. She has great passion and compassion for the teaching profession and for kids. But she had a very good reason for turning me down. At least she thought about it for a couple of days. I got that much. She turned me down because she said, "While I'm flattered, I'm part of a team that's doing something pretty special in Lowell. And we're not done yet." So... So I can't leave in the middle of a job. And so I'm staying in Lowell.
And indeed, the team in Lowell was doing something special. In December of 2007, when a 12-member EQA team evaluated the Lowell School District, they found that Lowell had demonstrated significant improvement in 44 of the 51 categories they reviewed. They stated that the district should be commended for the advances made during this period.
The state has an educational quality audit process. It's run by an office out of the governor's office. And they send a team to the district. And instead of looking at one single school, they're looking at the district as a whole. They have 116 standards, many more than the New England Association, that range from what's the status of your policy book to what's the quality of instruction in your math classes and everything in between. And so they've just done a visit. Again, we did a lot of data for them that they've looked at ahead of time. And then they've spent six days. They visited 116 classrooms. I think I alone was interviewed for nine hours. In the six days they were here, they interviewed the mayor, the city financial officer, school committee members, faculty, parents. Looked at a lot of data, a lot of reports.
Having a high school of almost 4,000 students does present a unique set of challenges in the Lowell District. Working with Headmaster William Samaras, Dr. Bear helped find innovative solutions to those needs. During her tenure, the freshman academy was established. This served to help eighth-grade students effectively transition into the high school environment and help them understand what resources they would have during the next four years. It also allowed a core of teachers and guidance counselors to work together with small groups of these freshman students.
Both the headmaster and I sat back and said, "Whoa, that's exactly the kind of thing this freshman academy is designed, that problem is designed to solve." It shouldn't be who happens to hear about a resource. We should have the resources there, introduce youngsters to them in a systematic way, not just tell them it exists, but give them an opportunity to see what the resource can provide, really develop a systematic way of introducing youngsters to the opportunities, to the challenges, and work with them to find out what supports they need. The youngsters will have an experience that will be designed specifically for freshmen.
And of course, after an exhaustive two-year process and thorough examination, Lowell High was awarded a renewed accreditation. This effort has set the groundwork for the next 10 years of progress at the high school.
There's some very exciting news and much anticipated news of the outcome of the accreditation visit by the team from the New England Association of schools and colleges. We have just received news that the commission has endorsed the work of the high school staff and of the community in its support of the high school and has awarded reaccreditation to Lowell High School with no strings attached, no warning, no sort of black marks on it, just a very clear set of recommendations for steps to be taken to continue and intensify the work that's going on.
Dr. Bear has always placed the highest priority on the needs of each student and has worked to make sure that the school system and the community are actively engaged in the progress of our children. High-level student learning meant the melding of efforts in setting goals that everyone understood, developing teacher skills, and working with the community to ensure a safe and respectful environment where learning could flourish. And so, as we join together to give Dr. Bear our most heartfelt thanks and to bid her farewell, we would like to share the thanks and thoughts of our most important citizens, the schoolchildren themselves.
Strategy, strategy, strategies.
Thank you, Dr. Bear.
Turn and talk to your brother.
Tell about what you learned this year.
Fractions.
Multiplication.
Addition.
Division.
Adverbs.
Adjectives.
Nouns.
Goodbye and good luck, Dr. Bear.
Thank you, Dr. Bear.
Have a great summer.
Some are clear, some are mean and all.
Thank you, Dr. Bear.
Thank you, Dr. Bear, for all your young love.
Adios, gracias.
Thank you, Dr. Bear. Washington School will miss you.
We will miss you very much, Dr. Bear.
Listen, my children, and you shall hear of the several years of Dr. Bear. She went up the alley, down the street. They go well, school can be beat.
Wasn't that video wonderful? Dr. Bear, as much as the committee and I will say it tonight, no one could have said it better than our children. And I think they know what you've done in our school system. They said it on that video, and that video is priceless. I will now ask if there's any members of the school committee who would like to offer some comments.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Regina?
I am the longest-serving member here. I'm going to go first with the allowance of my colleagues. On Dr. Bear's first day, I said, "Let's go have breakfast at the Owl because you'll never have breakfast anyplace quite like this." And when we were sitting there having breakfast, I said, "Look, Carla, here's the deal. You'll never work anyplace else quite like this." And I think I might have been right. You have brought learning to a different level here in the city. And it has always been about making sure that kids were on track and that kids got what they needed. And you recognized that there were challenges in Lowell that people in Andover and Chemsford didn't have and that we had to work harder to overcome those challenges. And you pushed staff to work harder to overcome those challenges. And it was not acceptable to you when they didn't. And it showed in our test scores, and it showed in the video, and it showed in our accomplishments. And you did that, and you have a lot to... You have a huge accomplishment that you should take credit for. And I know that my colleagues also want to say a few words, and we have something arriving shortly for you. It is walking its way over here. But I'm going to allow my next colleague in years of service to say a few words. Thank you, Your Honor.
Who would like to go next?
Yeah.
Ms. Leahy?
Thank you. Carla, you've been here my whole career, seven years. And it's always been about the kids, as Regina in the video and everybody's always said. And at least now, when I go to the Lowell Sun and they say, "What do you think of the superintendent?", I'll have someone to compare you to because I never did. So I said, "Hey, she's doing a great job. I can't compare her to anybody else. Everything's wonderful. Kids are learning, grades are up, everybody's happy." But in all seriousness, you've been great to the people, the community, the kids, your staff, and as Regina had said, you had expectations for everybody. And some people didn't like it, and a lot of people appreciated it. And I think that it's paid off, and we're a better place for having you here. So thank you and good luck, and we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Mayor. Carla, the biggest thing that impressed me about you was your good sense of humor in a lot of difficult times, especially sometimes at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning when we're doing negotiations, when people are ready to kill each other. We always had a good laugh leaving when the sun's rising almost. But the thing that impressed me the most, and I said to you on the telephone, the making of a human being really is how they react when things don't go their way. And when disappointment arises, how they react and how they hold themselves going forward. And when they had the state commissioner position, and you unfortunately weren't the one that they chose, which is, to the state of Massachusetts, that's, in my opinion, a problem. But when you didn't get it, you really showed strong character and impressed me a lot by how hard you worked when you came in here in January, right up until through the budget. You were engaged. We had... The finance committee had massive debate regarding all kinds of positions. And a lot of people would have simply said, "You know what? It matters not to me, I'm going to do something else," or just let it go by the side. And I think that in itself is a perfect example of what we want our young folks and ourselves to hold ourselves accountable. And for me personally, when you look at diversity, this is an example that I hope I can hold myself accountable to. I thank you for your efforts. I wish you the best in anything that you do in the future. We don't always agree on every particular issue, but I really do respect you and I thank you for your service. Thank you.
Ms. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to personally thank you, Dr. Bear, for the eight years of service to Lowell Public Schools and to the city of Lowell. And I also want to wish you, Dr. Bear, success in your future endeavors and happiness in your personal life. Good luck to you, Dr. Bear. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to...? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, we come tonight with a unified purpose of thanking Dr. Bear for the many years of hard work she's done here in our district. I'd just like to say that I think that when we look back and when I look back personally at the growth we've seen in our district and I think of the work that Dr. Bear has done for us, I tend to think only in superlatives, that the exceptional work that was done, I think, is something that certainly Dr. Bear should be very proud of and that we should all be particularly thankful for. I think you start thinking of qualities that she brought to this position. And I think Dr. Bear was without a doubt a consummate professional, regardless of the maelstrom that was spinning around her, and there were many coming from many different directions. There was never a question but that Dr. Bear would do the absolute professional appropriate thing. And that is no mean feat in very charged situations. I also think that Dr. Bear was truly an inspired educator and an inspiring educator. And I think that in a district like ours where there were great challenges, she not only could see what the potential was, she could see a path for our district, for the many committed individuals who needed to make that work happen. And that is certainly an inspiration. I also can think of the really unwavering, determined, dogged commitment to progress, again, despite many, many challenges at all levels and in many cases from all directions. And I think that it was that singularity of purpose that drove Dr. Bear and certainly drove the progress that we are able to point to now at the conclusion of eight years. When I think of how I would best describe what really happened and what Dr. Bear really brought to this, the most lofty thing I can say is that she did the job. It was an important job. It was a critical job for our students, for our district, for our city. And it was done, again, with great grace, I believe, and with true inspiration and dedication. And it is, at the end of the day, to be able to sit back and say that a critically important job lay in front of her, and she did it without a great deal of fanfare. It was hard work, slogging work many times. And I greatly appreciate that, you know, three words, "Did the job", is the most, I think, grateful phrase I can use. I, for one, am extremely appreciative of having the opportunity to work with you. And I look forward to your future endeavors and hearing many great things about your future career. Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Martin. The mayor would like to offer a few words to put everything into perspective. You look at some large companies in the Merrimack Valley, and the CEO of those companies probably doesn't... They don't have as much responsibility, as many functions as a superintendent of Lowell Schools. Just stop and think of this. 2,100 employees, 15,000 students. 4,000 students attend Lowell High School, the second-largest high school in the state. There are students from 37 different countries that attend Lowell High School. Although I've only had an opportunity to work with Dr. Bear for six months, I've known her for eight years, and she is an educator. To be the superintendent of such a large school district holds an awful lot of responsibility and immense dedication. I've known... I've called Dr. Bear on a Friday evening. I said, "Maybe she's still there." 5:30 on a Friday evening, she answered the phone. The video that we all witnessed, it talked about Dr. Bear's work over the past eight years. But the most important thing in that video was the children. The children who said, "Thank you." They're the ones who know. They're the ones who know. And I've had an opportunity to visit many schools in this city. All excellent students, teachers, and they know what direction they're going in. You can see the pride and dedication on the teachers' faces. And I recently went to many schools about the homelessness essays. They're outstanding. And the gentleman from Washington indicated in my office that he wants a copy of those essays. Probably going to use them throughout the country, from Lowell, Massachusetts. So, Dr. Bear, as much as the adults have much to say in thanking you for your service, I think the children said it all. God bless you, and may your career, with the good Lord walk with you, and may your career continue. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come to the microphone and offer a few words? Don't be bashful. Anyone? Come on. No? Come on. Okay, Dr. Bear?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank Jack, and I think a few people sitting around here had something to do with that video as well. So thank you. It was very special. Thank you for your kind words. More importantly, thank you for the privilege of being here and making Lowell my home for work, many more hours than my family would have liked on some days for the past eight years. Regina, I have to say that you brought me to the Owl and you said I'd never have a breakfast like that. Ted took me to the boot. And I just want to tell you, if you can digest the boot, then you can make several trips to the Owl for one boot. But, you know, the committee that hired me in 2000, I did notice I didn't have any white or gray hair back then. The committee that hired me, Eileen Donahue was mayor at the time, Joe Mendanza was on the committee, John McQuade, Tim Golden, Kevin McHugh, and Regina Fatakante and Connie Martin. And I've served the superintendent now under four mayors, Eileen, Rita Mercier, Armin Mercier, Bud Caulfield. The four members of the committee who have given way to John, First John. And then I think Jackie, then Jim, and now Dave Conway. So I've served with all of you, and I've worked on your behalf. You know, I'm very proud of being the first woman superintendent in the city of Lowell. And I mentioned in the earlier reception that it was an extraordinary moment when George Sappatseris escorted me to the city clerk's office on July 1st of 2000. And I signed that book and looked at signatures that go back into the 1800s of superintendents of schools. And so to know that my name will be there forever is a great, great memory. And I'm delighted that Chris Scott has signed her name. So now George Sappatseris, Carla Bear, and Chris Augusta Scott as we've moved into the 21st century. This city is an amazing place. In 2000, as I said, September 11th hadn't happened. We didn't have iPods. There were a lot of things. There was no... We didn't know what hanging chads were. George Bush had not yet been elected president. We didn't know what no child left behind meant. There were a lot of things that we didn't know then that we know now. We hadn't heard of investigations math. We hadn't heard of connected math. We really hadn't even imagined a freshman academy. We hadn't had the Lowell Teacher Academy. We hadn't had common quarterly assessments. So, eight years has flown by. We've done a lot of work together that I think is good work. I've had an awesome team. Jean, these folks, Jay, Ann, Sue, Ted Rorak, when he was here, Helen Flanagan, my first year. I've had an awesome group of people to support my work, and any accomplishments we've had are our accomplishments. June Carmier, couldn't have a better secretary. The school committee knows that because you depend on her almost as much as I depend on her. The principals of your schools, the city schools, are, I would stack the principals up against any city system in the Commonwealth, and in fact, I'd stack them up against any school system in the Commonwealth. They are a treasure, and I hope you will treat them well in the years ahead. The teaching staff is committed. It's really interesting to talk to superintendents from other districts who struggle with some recruiting, and we do too. But what's really wonderful about Lowell, and Sue knows this, there are kids who finish college and they want to come back and teach and give back to Lowell High School. And we have a large number of young people now in their twenties, early thirties, who have come back to take their turn with the next generation. And you should be proud of that and take advantage of that. The work, the work we've done really stands as a next step, I hope, in the work that George Sapi Saris and his team had done, to build the schools, to adjust to Ed reform of 1993. And then, as I've said, my work, my work was to focus on what was going on inside the school buildings, to try to ratchet up the curriculum, bring, bring a new sense of urgency to academic achievement. Dr. Scott's challenge, I think, is going to be to bring more voices to the table, the voices, the voices of all the parents in the city, of all the kids in the city, to the classroom conversation and to the parent conversation and to the work that lies ahead. I'm confident that she's up to that challenge, and I think you've chosen well. The, the city is, is, the city, I think, is so, so fortunate to have its history. It's a rich history. It's a proud history. And I wanted to share with you one of my proudest moments of my time here, and there have been many moments of great celebration and great joy, vastly more moments of joy than of any kind of disappointment. And that was a couple of years ago when the Hancock case was being heard in court. And that was the school finance equalization case. It's the case that has made such a difference for Lowell. The case was brought by the parent of a first grader in the Brockton Public Schools back in the 1980s, and I think Ms. Fattacanti knows, and probably was one of the committee members that voted back in the 1980s to sign Lowell on to the lawsuit. The lawsuit said that the Commonwealth was not meeting its obligation to provide an equal education to all students, and it pointed to cities like Brockton, Lowell, Lynn, Worcester, Boston, that were not getting their fair share of state funding, and so they were not able to do for Lowell children and Brockton children what the children needed. The threat of that lawsuit and the likelihood that it would win led to the Education Reform Act, which brought millions of dollars in state aid to Lowell, and it brought the curriculum frameworks, it brought the accountability that comes with MCAS testing, it brought higher expectations for teacher qualifications, brought a host of new demands and new opportunities for the public schools. And this school committee, the school committee of the 90s, followed by the subsequent committees, invested that money wisely in programs that would serve kids well. And by 2004, the question arose again, as funding was cut in 2003, to get that case going again. And so, I had the privilege in 2004 of representing Lowell for two days in court in Boston in front of Judge Botzford, who was the assigned judge to hear all of the testimony about the case. And I was an unusual witness because in 2003, I was sitting as the superintendent of Lowell. But in 1993, when Ed reform was passed, I had been sitting as the superintendent of the Wellesley Public Schools, which in 1993 had been deemed a comparison district with Lowell. So, I got to testify in 2003 about my experiences as superintendent in Wellesley and what I found in Wellesley in 1993, and the opportunities that were available to children in 1993, and the opportunities that were available in 2003 to Lowell. It was a very proud moment that I could sit in those unusual opposite seats. And I'd like to think that I used, at times, the opportunity to be here in Lowell to bring the voice of urban children and urban teachers and urban schools to a statewide audience so that people could understand the challenges better that we face here and that could bring resources that we need to solve those challenges. It's been an extraordinary eight years. It's been a privilege. I said it when I came here, that it would be a privilege and that it was a privilege, and eight years later, I say the same. I thank you for the gift of allowing me to spend my eight years here, working on behalf of the kids and the teachers of the Lowell Public Schools. Thank you.
Welcome. I neglected to recognize the fact that school committee member Jackie Doherty has a tape, and she's out of the country with her family, but we could roll that tape, and it's expressing her feelings and her thoughts.
Hi. I apologize that I cannot be here in person to thank Dr. Bear for her excellent service to the education of our children. During her tenure, I have been an intimate observer and participant in Dr. Bear's vision for student achievement, first as a parent volunteer in our classrooms, then as an activist on the Citywide Parent Council, and finally, as a member of the Lowell School Committee. Through the last eight years, through budget cuts and controversies, Dr. Bear has been relentless in her pursuit of improving instruction, curriculum, and student achievement. Because of her leadership, Lowell is one of the most successful large urban school districts in the state today. Thank you, Dr. Bear, for your commitment to excellent schools. Your efforts have transformed the education of 14,000 Lowell schoolchildren, a priceless legacy that will benefit our community for years to come, and we thank you.
Thank you, school committee member Jackie Doherty. And now, if Regina Fattacanti and John Leahy, we have a gift for you, Dr. Bear, that we hope you will cherish and think of us in your new career.
It's not time for you to sit there yet. You're still sitting there. I said, "It's not time for you to sit there yet."
Thank you very much for everyone's comment. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to, don't walk out of the building stage? Yeah, I wish I said something. There you go.
Hi. My name's Jen Parasol. I work at the Moody Elementary School. And the first time I met Dr. Bear, she had mentioned my New York accent and that she had a prized possession in her hands, which was seats from the, I think, I don't know whether they were bleachers back in the days, but seats from Ebbets Field because her dad was on the construction demolition team. And I had told her how if my father was alive today, he would probably want to know where she lived so he could come get them. Because my father, although Brooklyn, being from Brooklyn, he was always a Dodger fan, even when they went out to LA, he would never say Los Angeles, you know, he would always say Brooklyn. That was his team. And I just want to say thank you very much because also, we would always say George Sapi Saris, through Citywide Parent Council, working with him, it was always George Sapi Saris, George Sapi Saris, Mr. Sapi Saris. And when you came and you walked into the Moody School, you just said Carla, and that was very friendly of you, and I want to thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Anyone else?
Could have been a Yankee fan. That could have been a real problem, which I was as a child.
I could listen to those accents all day long, New Jersey and Brooklyn and the Bronx. But there's nothing else to be said. We will continue on with the agenda. I want to thank everyone for being here, for Dr. Bear at the reception. Well deserved, and once again, we want to wish Dr. Bear the best. And I know you're not going to be sitting in that chair long. You'll be out and about educating children, as you have been for decades. Moving on with the agenda. Minutes. I'm looking for a motion, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the 2009 budget hearing on May 16th, 2008. Motion to move for approval by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Minutes, those minutes have been accepted and put on file. The minutes for fiscal year 2009 budget hearing reconvene May 17th, 2008. That's just a continuation. Motion by Ms. Martin to accept those minutes and put them on file, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Those minutes have been accepted and placed on file. Now, if we can have a motion to accept the minutes of the last school committee meeting on May 21st, 2008. Motion to accept those minutes by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor of accepting those minutes and placing them on file, signify by saying aye. So, May 21st, that seems like it was a year ago. Okay, let's move on with the agenda, and permission to enter please.
Yes, two separate items under permission to enter. One set of contracts having to do with, primarily with operations and special education placements. The Harbor Schools Incorporated, $5,429 to amend an existing contract for one student payment out of the fiscal year '08 budget, special ed tuition. City of Haverhill, $90,478, the same purpose, to provide for the tuition for four students out of the fiscal year '09 budget of special ed tuition. St. Anne's Homes, $691,145, tuition placements for 16 students, funding from the fiscal year '09 budget. Jean Mann, $12,750 to provide initial training in writing instruction, provided by the school department local professional development account. Keys to Literacy LLC, $26,179 to provide content teachers with professional development related to reading. Again, the professional development budget of the local budget plus various grants. Public Consulting Group Incorporated, $67,000 to conduct an adolescent literacy audit of nine middle schools and the freshman academy, funded by the school department's school improvement grant. BMCA Incorporated, $71,535 for the, a three-year contract for cleaning kitchen hoods and filters and other kitchen equipment, provided by the food services contracted services account. Donald Sullivan and Bruce Sullivan, $18,750 to provide onsite repair and service for a range of audio and visual equipment throughout the district, provided by the school department local contracted services budget. Passick Corporation, $33,728, which is the maintenance and repair contract for the security cameras and related servers and equipment at Lowell High School and the freshman academy, funding from our fiscal year '09 department repair and maintenance of equipment account. Post Office Locksmith Incorporated, $33,000 to provide maintenance for the locking devices and mechanisms, maintenance and repair throughout all of our school buildings, funding, again, provided by the repair and maintenance of equipment account of the fiscal year '09 budget. And seating design and innovations, $19,250 for providing repair and maintenance of the gymnasium bleachers at 19 of our schools. Again, same account, repair and maintenance of equipment account.
Are there any questions pertaining to any of the items that were under contract presented by Dr. Bear? If not, move for approval by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes?
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway? He's absent. Ms. Doherty? She's absent. Ms. Fattacanti?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
Madam Superintendent?
And then, also, under permission to enter, the contracts of three assistant deputy superintendents expire on June 30th. So, upon consultation with City Solicitor O'Connor, I'm recommending that the committee vote to amend the contracts of three individuals to extend them for 30 days under their present terms. Jean Franco, interim deputy superintendent, Roger J. Lang, assistant superintendent for finance and operations, and Susan Mulligan, assistant superintendent for personnel and recruitment.
Move approval to amend, your honor.
Move to amend the contracts for 30 days by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes?
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Ms. Fattacanti? Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Moving on with the agenda. Under memorials by Regina Fattacanti. Moment of silence with dock in chambers for Lorraine B. Reed, mother of Lowell High School football coach Elle Pear, and mother-in-law of Denise Pear, Lowell High School clerk; Guy Smith, father-in-law of Deborah Smith, assistant special education administrator; and James Downey, husband of Kathy Downey, Sullivan School library media specialist. Shall we all rise and dock in chambers and have a moment of silence? Thank you. May they rest in peace. Unfinished business. Fiscal year '09 budget. Madam?
I wonder if the committee might want to defer this until there's a report from the finance subcommittee, because I know the finance subcommittee has studied this issue, so...
And this will come up later during the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Public participation. Anyone wishing to, excuse me?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, ask, make a motion for a suspension of the rules for the purpose of discussing an upcoming budget item?
Okay. Move to suspend the rules by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Fattacanti. All in favor of the suspension, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Suspensions are in order.
Hi, Honorable Mayor and respected school committee people. I come here tonight, well, first of all, my name is Genevieve Parasol. I reside at 20 Bryan Road in Lowell, Massachusetts, and I am a registered voter. Because I remember, we go back, we go back a long way, Regina. Twenty-some odd years. Okay. I come here tonight to ask you to please reconsider the 10.5 clerical proposal that was addressed to Mr. La...
was addressed to Mr. Lang on May 15th, 2008. This proposal would approximately save $20,000-plus that could then be utilized towards student support personnel in a classroom setting. I am aware it is in the contract that it was negotiated on. However, we are asking to suspend it for this year, especially with the fiscal constraints and everything like that. There are other reasons, and I'm sure many of you school committee people were, you know, contacted by other school secretaries by either emails or phone calls. So I am asking if you would please revisit this and reconsider. And thank you very much. And again, Dr. Baer, good luck to you. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Mary Jo Adie. I'm a clerk at the Malloy Alternative and the Laurel East School, as well in Lowell. I really didn't plan on speaking, however, I had a letter addressed to the school committee members and decided to wait to see how the... how things proceeded. But just bear with me while I read this, please. My thoughts on working together collectively as a group is really why I wrote this. Understanding the goal that all parties are interested in the efficiency and effectiveness of clerical staff with regard to the opening of 2008, 2009 school year, and ultimately, what is in the best interest of the students. In my opinion, working the additional five days did not make sense to me. In my opinion, working those days would be unnecessary. We are there six days prior to the school year, as well as five days after the school year. In part, cost-effectiveness prompted the initial request before you, as well as the value we place on our time off. The monetary value of working 10 and 1/2 months weighs into that decision upon us accepting our positions as clerks, as 10 and 1/2-month clerks. So, you know, it's a decision we made with our families as to our ability to work the 10 and 1/2 months. And I know that negotiations were met, and that's the time we should've done this. And I thank you for taking the time to listen to us, and I await your response on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come to the podium and speak? I'd like to open this up now to my colleagues who would like to discuss this issue. Anyone like to discuss, open this up? Madam Superintendent?
I would just want to reiterate the reasons for negotiating this in the first place. Is that we need, if we're going to make maximum use of the technology tools that we have now available to us that weren't available 10 years and even five years ago, if we're going to make maximum use of the technology, maximum effective use of the schedule and getting kids into class ready to go from day one, we need this extra time. There's a reason why the committee negotiated this. During the last negotiations, we have an opportunity, if the school-based clerical staff comes five days earlier, to provide a level of training and support customized to the secretary's current... various secretary's current level of knowledge of various technology tools. Everything from the X2 software, which is our whole student database system, which the clerks have done a fantastic job of learning on the fly. But we've not been able to provide systematic, really good professional development for the clerical staff in the student software program, in presentation software, in Excel, in database software, so that our clerical staff has a range of skill and knowledge of it, much of it picked up on their own through their good efforts and because they want to do the job well. But there are various, when you're heavily self-taught in a lot of those tools, there are gaps that mean that you're often not able to work with those tools nearly as efficiently or effectively, nor are the tools able to be used as effectively to make the experience for teachers and students that much better. By having these additional days, five days before the week before school, would allow... allows us... And I know that Mr. Lang and others are already at work putting together a really thoughtful plan for training and professional development to take advantage of some of that time so that we can do the kind of training we've never been able to do. In addition, by being available early, then materials that have arrived in the course of the summer, and other work that needs to be done in preparation for teachers' arrival can be done without the rush and the problems with getting it all done in time for a really smooth start for school. We only have students 180 days. Teachers only come back one day. They don't... They start one day before the kids come back. One of the great, I think, advances we've made in the last eight years, and that's heavily a result of the work led by Sue Mulligan in Personnel, is we now have virtually every classroom staffed with a teacher for that first day of school. The vast majority of them are certified. We really are able, in most of the schools, to really get that first day of school be a day of real learning, because all of the backup work for which the clerical staff is really important is able to be done. What's not able to be done is the maximum use of the technology tools, which we need. And so we'd be able to have a much smoother start to the school year if we have those five days in which our school-based clerical staff is at work. So I know it would be easy for me to sit back tonight and just say, "Hey, it's your problem." But I really feel strongly that there was a very important reason that we negotiated that. And I know that the clerical staff, because they've never experienced here a really good opportunity for professional training with really good instruction that's really customized to where you are. You've never had that, so it's hard to know what you'd be missing. So I just feel very strongly that the committee needs to hold to that, that it will be a very important investment that will pay off in terms of student learning. And I have very confidence that Assistant Superintendent Lang and other staff will put together a really effective use of those 10 days before teachers arrive back officially on that day before school and be able to make much better use of that time than we have in the past. So I just urge you strongly to really give this a try. Evaluate it then. Evaluate it after you've given it a good try. I think... I'm really very confident that it will make a big difference in the quality of the start of the school year. And I really think the committee needs to give that a try.
Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back a number of years ago, the clerks would assist the guidance counselors and housemasters, at least at the high school level, at the end of the year for that... for those additional five days. And I think that was... I think it was extremely important to make sure that all the loose ends were taken care of. As time went on, I think there was a suggestion back a few years ago to bring the clerks in earlier so that we could have a smooth transition. And I think it worked, and it worked well. However, I also think that during those five days that they're brought in early, there certainly can be some time budgeted for professional development. And also during the year, the school year, there are certainly, in 180 days, there are times that we can put aside for professional development, too. And I think that's important, because it's an ongoing situation. It's not just crammed in. You take technology and cram it in in two or three days or four days. I'm not sure how effective that is. If it is over a period of the 180 days where there's a constant reinforcing with the technology specialists, I think that becomes perhaps just a little bit more effective, to tell you the truth. And I think that, taking into consideration the financial times that we're in right now, an additional $20,000 savings, I think that that would be very helpful, to be quite frank with you. And if individuals are willing to give that up and take that $20,000 and put it into perhaps a program that we have cut or have eliminated, I think it might be a good idea.
Anyone else like to?
Thank you.
I'd just like to ask the superintendent. I received some calls. And if the clerks come in the next five days, it'll be 10 days, right? All the support systems going to be in there with them as well? Because I heard that's not the case.
No, I think that's what now becomes both an obligation and the opportunity. So yes, they absolutely will be. And I also, it's not mutually exclusive that there be professional development during the year, because I think that... I agree with you that the ongoing support is important. But what you'll be able to do using judiciously those parts of those 10 days is to really give the kind of intensive instruction that then you revisit periodically through the year. And that's how the maximum amount of learning will take place. It's... You know, it's very difficult in a house office or clerk scheduler role or the single secretary at a middle school for them to be pulled out during one of the 180 days for any extensive period of time for training on the technology tools, the software tools that we now really do expect. We depend on their knowing, but we haven't... frankly, we have not yet really tapped the power of the technology nearly as much as we will be able to with continued upgrading of the tools and continued intensified new support for the clerical staff.
Madam Superintendent, one other question. What is the worst-case scenario if they don't come in those extra five days? And how long have they been coming in on the extra five-day period? How many years have they been doing that?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to... Mr. Lang? How long have the... There might be a secretary here who knows. How long the secretaries have come in for the extra five days?
The clerks.
The five days before?
Right. I can't... Someone come to the podium, please? Just give us a ballpark.
Ballpark, around 20 years we've been coming in.
For five days?
For just those five days.
Right. And it's the first time that the school department wants you to come in 10 days?
That's what they had negotiated for. You know, the additional... And we were given the information that, you know, it was the school committee during negotiations, that it was the school committee that wanted that, to keep everyone on the same track and paying the same salary, because of the fact that you had the new... Once the job was closed and they posted a new one, they posted it for 196 days instead of 191 days. And so they just want to keep that in, you know, line with everyone else.
Okay, thank you. John?
Thank you. I guess the only thing that bothers me about this is, as Mr. Conway had said, the budget constraint. And there's a lot of things that I wanted. There's a lot of obligations that we've filled this year. So I think when they came forward with this, to me, you know, I was glad that they spoke up. It was a good suggestion in my eyes. I could see the merit of what the superintendent argued tonight, but I think by deferring it one year, I think, in my mind, that that extra savings is worth it this year. Next year, we... They're going to have to do it. It's in the contract, so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I understand the position that, you know, any savings in a critically important budget year needs to be very well considered. My only concern is, and I was kind of listening to the clerks representative and listening to the superintendent, it reminds me in a lot of ways to conversations we've had about the changing nature of a lot of positions in our district. You know, I remember having conversations about principals, that principals today are not doing the same job that they were doing 10 years ago, 15 years ago. And I think the same is really very true of clerks. You know, as I think we all... You know, when I look at a lot of these positions, I think back to, you know, my experience going through Lowell Public Schools. And the clerks that, you know, I had interactions with were committed and wonderful, wonderful individuals. And, you know, their job, certainly while important, really focused more around, you know, if someone forgot a lunch, they had to call home. If, you know, they were doing tasks that, you know, certainly helped the school perform, but weren't nearly as critically important to the overall real fundamental functioning of our schools as today's clerks are. And I think the clerks in the Lowell Public Schools really have reached a point where they're important members of an administrative team, they're depended on, and they really serve a very critical function, for which I know we're all very appreciative. My only concern in this situation is that we've gone and we've started our plans anticipating that we're going to have this additional time on task, being able to work with the clerks and offer them some additional support and resources in that week. So while... And I also appreciate that the clerks were willing to make this offer. I do think that it was, you know, it was really very kind of them, and I appreciate that as well. I would not be able to support making this change at this point, but I do thank them for their consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Leary? Anything to say? Mr. Conway?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer the additional five workdays of the clerks at the beginning of the school year.
Defer?
Defer the additional five workdays of the clerks at the beginning of this school year coming up.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion?
Just a clarification, is it to defer for one year?
Just to make sure we have the correct language, too, that we'd also be deferring the... There were salary considerations made as part of that. I'm assuming that's...
Yeah.
Okay. Just... I just think that needs to be part of the motion before we...
If the motion passes, the savings or the additional monies will be $20,000, I believe, which could be incorporated into the general fund, which could be used...
Defer the days and the monies.
So what we would do, Your Honor, is we would take that $20,000 and we would put it in our suspense account in the event that we have any need for it throughout the year. We would then take that money from the suspense account and place it in our general budget where it's needed.
If we could reword the motion, defer the five extra days and exclude the budgetary item that would support that, that would include that in a nutshell. Okay? Seconded by Ms. Fattacante? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Superintendent?
Could I just offer that I would suggest that you... that the motion also indicate pending... All of it be pending the outcome of negotiations, because you... I believe you would want to renegotiate the contract to make that, because what if there was a member of the clerical staff who wanted you to abide by the contract and come in for those five days and be paid? So I think you need to figure out how you want to do that.
So we need to do three things. We need to suspend the five days to defer to next year. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. We need to suspend the allotment of the funds.
Right.
And we also need to reopen negotiations to negotiate with the clerks to remove the five days from their contract. Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
I think if you just refer to it as impact bargaining?
Impact bargaining.
Seconded by Mr. Conway. Substitute motion, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mia Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty? Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, one absent. Substitute motion passes.
Moving on with the agenda. Under motions. Motion by David Conway, requesting the superintendent of schools to send a letter from the school committee congratulating each member of the Lowell High School tennis team and Coach Jennifer Carey on a very successful 2008 season. Seconded by John Leahy. On the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we all know that we have many successful coaches and sports programs at Lowell High School throughout the years. Coaches like Ray Riddick, George Bossy, Scott Boyle, Tim O'Keefe, Rick O'Brien, Stan Stocklosa. This is just to name a few of the fine coaches that we've had and the great teams that we've had. I think as a father of two daughters, over the years, I certainly have seen that girls' sports quite often take a backseat to the boys' sports. And that's why I'm bringing this motion forward, because I think the girls' tennis team... this motion forward, because I think the, the girls' tennis team, like many other teams too, but the girls' tennis team had an extremely successful year, and I, and I've watched them a few times, and I, and I have to, have to admit, they have, they were, they made the school system very proud, they worked very, very hard, very talented young ladies. And I also want to recognize the fact that Coach Carey, who has just received the Coach of the Year Award for the third year in a row, and, you know, when you take a look at that, that's not unusual, that someone obviously becomes Coach of the Year, but it was pointed out to me that when you become Coach of the Year for three years in a row, that's extraordinary. And doing a little bit of research, I found out that people have told me that you actually have to go back into the years of Ray Riddick, in the sixties and the seventies, in order to, in order to get that accomplishment. And that's why this motion is on, that's why I put this motion on, to send a letter of congratulations to the girls' tennis team, and also to Coach Carey on, on, on her accomplishment as being Coach of the Year for three years in a row. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway, all favor the motion, signify by saying aye. Madam Superintendent?
Again, it would be easier to sit back, but I, I want to make a suggestion to the school committee, that you, that you refer this motion to the athletics subcommittee, at least the part that relates to sending a letter from the school committee to each member of the team. I'm, I'm just a little bit, and, and people, I think you know, that women's athletics are important to me, but I, I think it's important for the, I would suggest that the committee want, might want to establish criteria for sending letters to the members of teams, because the, because the criteria aren't clear, and so that the, the, the girls' tennis team, what their record of success is versus the crew team, or the lacrosse team, or the various teams, is not entirely clear, what the criteria would be, and so this might be establishing the precedent. And I distinguish that from sending a letter to the coach who's been named Coach of the Year three times, which is obviously a distinctive thing. But, but in terms of sending letters to the athletes, I just would suggest that the athletics subcommittee, before acting on this, might want to sit and have a conversation about, under what circumstances should we do? Should we send it to every student of every team, every student-athlete, every season? What, what, what defines, what's the criteria for success? So there, so that the youngster, you know, again, so that there's a fairness about it, and so that if the committee decides to do it, you can look at, so what are the implications for cost, in time, as well as money and postage, and so on? And it might be wise to consult with the new Director of Athletics and Physical Education. I just think that there's actually a precedent setting in this, that I think the committee might want to, would be well advised to spend some time in the subcommittee to review.
Mr. Conway, then Ms. Fattacanti?
Yes, I'll amend that motion and send it to the athletic subcommittee, it's fine.
Right. Ms. Fattacanti?
Your Honor, I, I believe I am the head of the athletics subcommittee, so it's probably a very good idea to actually establish some criteria, and it would be a good idea for us to begin to engage our new athletic director. This would, this would be his first subcommittee meeting, trial by fire is always good, isn't it, Madam Superintendent?
Great learning experience.
And, uh, great learning experience. So, I, I accept Mr. Conway's sending it to the athletics subcommittee, that's fine.
I, I think what Mr. Conway brought forward was a, a very noble, and it was a good gesture, but if you start signaling out one particular coach, you create.
Absolutely.
A, a little friction, and I witnessed the crew races on the Merrimack River. I'm gonna tell ya, that, those young women who were coaching the crew team, there were ten, as far as I can say, but there's many coaches that have attended. So I think we have to include them all, and it's, it's, it's good that you brought that forward, Mr. Conway, and it's, I, I thank the superintendent for pointing out to us that it's, we have to include everyone.
We will, we will endeavor to create some kind of criteria that makes it fair to everybody, absolutely.
All in favor of the motion that was amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Continuing with the agenda, motions by David Conway to ask the superintendent of schools to send a letter on behalf of the school committee thanking Mr. George Baracus for being a keynote speaker at the Lowell High School graduation for the class of two thousand eight, seconded by Ms. Fattacanti. On the motion, Mr. Conway?
Maybe I should ask the superintendent, has, has a letter been sent out before we go through this, this motion?
No.
Oh, okay. I just want to, I just want to say that Lowell High School, which we all, we all attended the school committee, and it was a, a, once again, another great, a great graduation, and again, being part of Lowell High School for so many years, you're always on pins and needles, and making sure that everything's gonna go fine, and, and, and it did, once again, it went fine. This year, it was a little unusual, because we had a keynote speaker, George Baracus, and he was, he was one of the distinguished alumni recipients, and I think that it was, it was great to see him there, and to explain to the students his role as a student when he was there, and also how important Lowell High School was to him and the city of Lowell, and also how important it was to give back to the community. So it was, it was, it was wonderful to see somebody that is such a role model to the community, to the students, and, and to the parents. And again, I, I think that we should very definitely send a letter, if, if one hasn't been already sent, send a letter in thanking Doc, excuse me, Mr. George Baracus for being the keynote speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Conway. On the graduation, I can remember ten years ago, attending the graduation at Lowell Memorial Auditorium, and it was, it was wonderful. I was so impressed with this graduation, and I could give you ten different reasons, and I believe there was over seven hundred students who graduated, and every one of those students who came across the stage had a smile, a twinkle in their eye, and they all said, "Thank you, Mr. Mayor." But the thing that impressed me the most was the flags of thirty-seven different countries. Those students who attended Lowell High School, and many of those students walked across that stage, and I, I can, I can say about the county medalists, but, and, and the faculty who made sure that everything went along smoothly, I was extremely impressed, and so went many people who attended that graduation, and hats off to everyone, everybody, with the superintendent, down to the faculty at Lowell High School, it was amazing. Wendy Jack did a great job as well, so. Okay, all in favor of the motion by Mr. Conway, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the letter of thank you will be on its way. Motion by James Leary, request the superintendent of, I'm sorry.
Mine's more important, you forgot mine.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
This is more important.
Motion by John Leahy. I'm sorry, John.
It's all right, I understand.
That the superintendent report to the committee any and all updates regarding the wellness program from past motions, seconded by Mr. Leary.
Thank you.
I'll never do that again.
This would be a motion for our next superintendent, but what I'm looking for in this motion is a, an update on our wellness programs. We've had a few motions in the past by Ms. Dougherty and maybe other committee members, but what I'm looking at is for information on what we've done already, how organized we are for this, because this is a big, a, a big issue, not only in our district, but across the Commonwealth, and there's so much that could be done with this, nutrition, exercise programs after school, and I want, and I know that there are teachers that do want to be involved, we don't want to discourage anybody that wants to, to participate in this, and, you know, it doesn't have to come down to people getting stipends or, or extra money. I mean, if someone wants to run an after-school program with some sort of intermural sports, you know, good, we should allow this, and we should have this in all our schools. So if we can just get an update, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Sorry, John. Motion by James Leary, request the superintendent develop a committee of appropriate school personnel in order to review our school energy costs, electricity, gas, oil, et cetera, and make recommendations to the facility subcommittee, which will reduce our energy costs and achieve our savings for the next school year. The target date for completion is the end of August two thousand eight, seconded by Mr. Leahy.
I know the superintendent's leaving like in a couple minutes, but if you get around this right away, it'd be most appreciated. It's, it's not as a good motion as Mr.
Nine AM tomorrow, you'll have it.
Yeah, yeah. On the way out, you could just, you know, name a committee, it'd be really, I would, I would appreciate.
It'll be short.
I think, and it's not as important as Mr. Leahy's motion, yet it's, it's not that bad. I, I did want to say, I mean, it was something that we've discussed in financial areas, I think what the, the, the thought process here is, we really wanted to cut that line item to save money to spend it elsewhere, and we, after, like a lot of, like I had said, the superintendent was very involved regarding the budget, this is something we talked at the budget meetings, finance meetings, and then offline. So it's gotta be something that we really look at to ensure we at least don't exceed our budget, it's kind of a concern that we all have. As far as the makeup of the committee, we have a variety of people, Brian Curley, Mike Cassidy, Jay Lang, what have you, we can get anybody, just something that we start moving forward with, thank you.
I, I just want to give you a, a quick update. Bob Sheehan, Head Electrician for the City of Lowell does a phenomenal job. He told me that they're changing the lighting in the fieldhouse, and the new lighting that's being installed will be like eighty percent efficient. And there's also new lighting gonna be installed at Colley Stadium, and the bulbs that will be in this new lighting, has a guarantee, warranty, twenty-five years per bulb. And they're gonna erect a whole new stanchion, poles, everything, so that's, that's in the works.
So I would put Bob on that committee, Madam Superintendent.
Huh?
I'd put Bob on that committee, thank you.
But that's a good motion, and I think every community is looking towards cutting their costs on energy. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Last motion of the evening, by James Leary, request the superintendent provide a report to the school committee as a whole outlining out-of-district special educational costs over the past two years. The report should separate long-term care facility costs versus day-out placement costs, seconded by Mr. Conway. On the motion?
Thank you, Mayor, just quickly, I worked hard on this with Ann Murphy, I think this is something that Ann has been working on already, and I think we're looking to, it's kind of one step in a, an evolution that we'll be going forward to see exactly where the costs are, and as we, as Ann works with this, with her folks, and we'll be looking for savings in other areas, hopefully at least have a good game plan in the next several months, at, at the end of the year. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Just very briefly, that's, that's an excellent, it's an excellent motion. I, I think what, what some cities are actually doing right now is they're sending out teams to reevaluate, and to see if, if they can, if they possibly can save some monies, because the cost, as, as my colleague is, is pointing out here in this motion, the cost is, is, is absolutely incredible. I mean, it can cost up to a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars for a residential, or what we might classify as a pediatric nursing care, which is absolutely incredible. And if we can come up with some type of solutions to save some of that money, it, it would be, it would be, you know, I think it's, it's imperative that we take a look at it. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. On the subcommittee reports, if you bear with me, if we can give all the subcommittee reports, and if there's no particular important motions, they're all important, but anything to do with finances and so forth, we'll hear all the subcommittee reports, and I looked at all the reports, and everyone has indicated except the reporter's report of progress. If we can go through those reports, and do that at the end of the reports, except the reporter's report of progress, but if there's a special subcommittee meeting, or report, rather, you want to speak on, that's part of the, the format as well. So, okay, so, yes, John?
I just have one, on the last one, the finance, well, number five, we do have a, something to vote on, okay, all right.
We'll have a report from each chairperson, and, and, okay? So the first subcommittee report's Community Partnership Subcommittee, Mr. Conway?
Mr. Mayor, do, do you want just the motion, or do you want the report?
Well, you give a report.
Okay, all right.
But rather than stop and take a vote on each report, I mean, just do it at once, and it's gonna expedite everything.
Okay, all right, thank you. In the, the Community Partnership Subcommittee meeting, we had it on Tuesday, the May twenty-seventh, and the subcommittee members present, myself, Regina Fattacanti, and Connie Martin, the school department personnel, Jay Lang, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and William Samaris at Lowell High School Headmaster. We had two topics on the agenda, the internship opportunities for Lowell High School students, and the update on the laptops for Lowell program, and we had, we discussed the, the desire to create internship opportunities for Lowell High School students during the school year, that may assist in, in obtaining after-school and, and also summer employment. We had Mr. Bruce Ocasian from the center, the Career Center for Lowell, came in and talked about the, the openings that, that he had available, and also, we had Robert Haydom came in and described the experiences with youth employment and internship programs from the private sector, and his perspective on that. So I think it was, it was very helpful. Out of that, we had a motion, do you want the motion now?
Sure.
Okay. A motion by Regina Fattacanti, seconded by Connie Martin, to request the superintendent direct Lowell High School Headmaster to identify a team of staff at Lowell High School to begin the process of seeking internships, community service projects, and employment opportunities within the local community for interested high school students, and that was approved three to zero.
Then what we're doing is we're directing some personnel in the school department to do this, so I think we should take a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we, motion to direct the Headmaster to look in internship and so forth, seconded by Ms. Fattacanti. Any discussion on the motion? If not, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coffield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Anything else, Mr. Leary?
Yes, and the second topic was the update on the laptops for Lowell program. This year, they anticipated giving out twenty-six laptops, we discussed that situation, and this particular program, when it, when it first started off, I think we gave out somewhere around eighty-eight laptops, so, once again, I think the Headmaster's having a difficult time trying to find people that are willing to volunteer, and, and it certainly shows in the number of laptops that are given out. We talked about the Headmaster perhaps reaching out to other sources for financial support, so that we can increase this, this number, because it certainly, and I have seen firsthand, it certainly does help the attendance, it stops many of the cutting that takes place in the senior year, and I think it has been an effective program. But the way the direction is at this, at this point, if it continues in this direction, this program will fade out. So I think that we're gonna, I, I think I want to take a good look at this and bring the Headmaster in again, and ask him what, what his procedures and process will be to, to, to enhance this program.
That's, that's still pending, there's not, no direction for anything?
No.
Accept the reporter's report of progress by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Accept the report and place it on file. The next subcommittee report, Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee Report, and approval of the minutes of the meeting of June third. Ms. Martin is the chairperson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The meeting was held on June, June third, and present were myself, Jackie Dougherty, and James Leary, and from central office, we had in attendance Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco, and Dr. Pamela Buchek, who's our reading coordinator for the district. There was really only one item of discussion at this meeting, and it was the adolescent literacy study. It's a conversation that we've been having within this subcommittee, and certainly with the committee as a whole, over the course of really this school year, recognizing that adolescent literacy is a, is a critical, is of critical importance to our students at that, in that middle school particularly age group, and recognizing that we need to make some changes to ensure that our students are coming into, whether it's, you know, coming into the high school, or going through their high school career, with a solid foundation of literacy to be able to compete and learn effectively. Based on a grant that we received from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we have received grant funding to implement a literacy audit that will allow us to basically look at what's available in our look at what's available in our schools, be able to do a survey of teachers to determine what they feel is of the highest priority, in terms of increasing literacy with their students. I think it will be of great value to us as we move forward in making sure that we get the appropriate resources into the classrooms, so that children can benefit from them, and so that teachers can use them effectively. So, I would, it was voted by, a motion by Ms. Doherty, and seconded by Mr. Leary, to accept the report as a report of progress, and to enable the administration to move forward with this endeavor.
Move to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fattacani. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The report has been accepted and placed on file. The next, any other discussion? Okay. Special Education Subcommittee Report, and approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 3rd. Ms. Doherty is chairperson, anyone would like to?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
Ms. Martin.
Did you have more to report on?
No, this is for the special ed.
Oh.
Jackie Doherty is the chairperson, but she's not in attendance this evening. We discussed and received some additional information from the high school regarding a recent case study that we were presented with, looking at a student who had some significant troubles at the high school. The specifics of it really aren't important, but I think what is most important is that the subcommittee did feel that the information shared with us by the high school administration helped in some ways to put into perspective the process that this particular student had gone through before reaching the point where some more dramatic measures had to be taken, so that was really just accepted as a report of progress. We also discussed some ongoing questions we have regarding parent concerns that come to this, come to the members of the committee in a variety of ways, in kind of hoping to have a more consistent way of responding. I think one of the key things that was discussed was the idea that parents really should be counseled, when they're calling a school committee member, we need to make sure that they've gone through the process, and only are coming to us really as a means of last resort. Making a recommendation to a parent to ensure that they talk to their child's special ed teacher, or regular ed teacher, whatever the teacher is that there may be an issue with, make sure that then, if that's not successful, that they're talking with their school principal, that they're talking with, whether it's a department head, director of special ed, one of the assistant superintendent's, and really, use, the system is in place to provide parents with a venue and with an avenue that they're able to discuss their concerns, and really get satisfaction, and be able to solve their problems, long before they need to involve a school committee member. I know for all of us on the committee, you know, we welcome phone calls from parents, and, you know, I find it extremely instructive to have information coming to me directly from a parent, and I would encourage, you know, parents to continue doing that, but understanding that there is a process in place that they should also be availing themselves of, in terms of being able to take the most direct route to solve their problems. That was accepted also as a report of progress. The final topic of discussion was regarding field trip coverage for our students within the Lowell public schools who require medical assistance. There have been some issues where students who are, you know, in, they're in inclusive classrooms, they're part of a class, that class is going on a field trip, and because of our inability to provide nursing coverage for those individual students, in many cases, those students, it's been required that their individual parent attend with them, or there have been cases where children haven't been able to attend. This is a huge issue in terms of equity, in terms of the way that we provide appropriate services for a free and appropriate education for special ed students, and for students who come to us with specific health concerns and requirements. So, there has been some effort taken, certainly by Assistant Superintendent Ian Murphy, in trying to contract with a local nursing company, agency, that has brought us some limited success. We all recognize that we need to do more to ensure that we're never leaving a child, to coin a phrase, behind, as the rest of the class is going on, on a field trip. So, it is something that is recognized, you know, we spoke with the representatives from our nursing, our nursing staff, who I think were willing to consider options. We're gonna be looking on the school department's side at some new opportunities and options, just to make sure that we can solve this problem, and really provide what we're required to by law for our students. That was also submitted as a report of progress, and that will conclude the meeting.
Accept the report as a report of progress.
Accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The report has been accepted and placed on file. The next report, Connie, I think that's-
Your Honor, I believe I'm giving the Lowell High School Subcommittee Report.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. But you know what, she was up to the task, see her looking around, I said, "Up to the task."
I thought you were filling in for Jackie, so, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Lowell High School Subcommittee met at the Colleen Kriegen TV studio. Present the evening were Jackie Doherty, who's the chairperson, myself, and Mr. Conway, who are members of the Subcommittee. Representative of the central office, Jean Franco, then Paul Schlickman, and other members present, Bill Samaras, the Headmaster, Dr. Wendy Jack, Carrie Lynch, and Denise O'Connor, the coordinator of the smaller learning communities. Ms. O'Connor started off by talking to us about the smaller learning communities, and that student tutors that have been tutoring students on Saturday mornings, and the tutoring plan is a no-cost attempt to replace the services that we receive from UMass Lowell. Gear Up Tutoring that will extend to grade ten, as it moves on with the students. Also, we had a discussion about the, some future plans and challenges. One of the plans is the nursing program at UMass Lowell, it's called Bring Diversity to Nursing. It prepares students for careers in nursing, but what it does, Your Honor, is it tries to reach out into our, as you said, there are what, thirty-eight flags that represented Lowell High School students?
Yeah.
What the program tries to do is reach out into the communities that may not have previously thought about nursing as a career, and it tries to bring those youngsters into the, at least the thought process of making medicine a career. The other thing that we talked about was the expansion of the Health and Bioscience Academy, which is very exciting. We also discussed the building of the scheduling process that we are attempting to do this year for the first time. We're gonna try to build, Your Honor, by the last day of school, which was a couple of days ago, a complete schedule for every youngster, so that when they leave the school building, they're going to know what their schedule is for the coming year. Now, unfortunately, students will leave and be replaced by others, so those students will need to have schedules, but we really did yeoman's work, really trying to push out that schedule, so that makes it a lot less, you know, crazy when students are coming back to school and not knowing what their schedule is. Those were the major things that we discussed.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other discussion on the report, if not, motion to accept the report, yes, Connie?
If I could just ask a quick question, and I don't know if it had come up during your discussions, but I was looking at the Health and Bioscience Academy information, and, you know, looking at it, it looks like we had sixteen students who graduated. Is that typical? I mean, that is a very small learning community.
Well, here's what we did, Ms. Martin. We actually had Dr. Jack go through the numbers of the academies, what the attendance was. Some of the students have an attendance of ninety students, or sixty students, others have an attendance of thirty. The Bioscience has an attendance of sixteen. That's why they're trying to, I think that this program with UMass Lowell, maybe tried to garner more students into the sciences, and build up that academy a little bit more. We were dismayed at some of the lower numbers, but there were, but as was said in the meeting, Your Honor, there were sixteen youngsters, and that would not have thought about being in a Bioscience Academy, but it was there, it was a program that was tailored to their needs, and it was successful for them. So, we asked about what would happen if the numbers got small, and what was explained to us was that even though there might be only sixteen students, students from other sections of the high school are still taking courses that make up the Bioscience Academy. They're still taking the sciences, and they're still taking the chemistry. So, even though there's only sixteen that graduated from the program, there are other students who are actually partaking in the course selections that this academy offers. Okay, you're welcome.
Excellent report. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor?
Aye.
The report has been accepted and placed on file, and I'd like to recognize former school committee member Kevin McHugh, who's in attendance. Thank you, Kevin, for being here. Subcommittee report, Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Leary?
Thank you, Mayor, this is gonna, I apologize, this is gonna be more detailed and meticulous, and-
No.
And it's John Leahy's fault, so I want to point that out. I want to, first, we met on June 12th, myself, John Leahy, and Jackie Doherty, and the Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. The biggest part of the meeting, and, oh, and I apologize, the Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco was in attendance and provided valuable information at the meeting. We were talking specifically regarding the city council and the city manager adding into the budget a hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars, one hundred and sixty-one, four hundred and fifty-four dollars, and I want to first thank the city council and the city manager for doing that. Based on that recommendations, what Mr. Lang will be going through right now, if you all have on page eight and page nine of a handout, an Excel spreadsheet, the superintendent's recommendations were to add an ESL teacher for the Malloy Alternative School, an ESL teacher split between the Bartlett and the Pine, a mathematics art at the Rogers for Allied Arts, that's a, really more of a computer mathematics, very high-tech, a mathematics intervention teacher at the Wang, an instructional technology teacher at the Stocklosa, and elementary reading teachers at the, oh, that's actually coming up next, so I apologize. So, Mr. Lang, if you can all refer to page eight and nine on your Excel spreadsheet, because there's specific items that we have to vote on and move things within our budget on pages, and I apologize for the detail, but we have to do it. Yeah, yeah. So, if Mr. Lang could guide us through that.
Yeah, why don't I do that, on page, what you've got listed as page eight, is a listing by the grouping, and then the actual votes will take place on page nine. So, what's listed on page eight in the handout that Assistant Superintendent Lang provided, is first, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars was added by the city manager, not for new services, but just to switch over to the school budget, the cost, the two-thirds of the rental for the central office administration buildings. The rest, as Mr. Leary pointed out, are the teaching positions, and going down to the Maury Elementary position, and the Pawtucketville Memorial Reading Positions. Both of those are on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee. You've asked to bring that forward, to restore those as well, and to offset that cost by reductions in the capital improvement budget. So, those are all listed through there. Could I add something, based on your earlier vote this evening, on the clerical? So, what that will look like is twenty thousand dollar reduction from page five, clerks, and then, based on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee, a twenty thousand dollar addition that will appear on page eight, under contracted services, that would be a new line item under contracted services for the revolving museum.
Yeah, and I think the superintendent, I was gonna go over that-
I'm sorry.
But, no, but that's fine, actually, do it much more fluid and quickly than I was gonna do it, so I absolutely agree with it. I think the Subcommittee had discussed, Committee Woman Doherty specifically discussed, that there was a matching grant from the revolving museum that worked with the Malloy Alternative High School, that the Malloy, from the revolving museum, does get twenty-five thousand dollars if we can match it, and they did an excellent program with our students that is of great benefit. So, the Finance Committee voted three to nothing to support that, and I support the superintendent's recommendation, using the monies that we just voted on tonight to help pay for that particular program. And you can take it now, Superintendent, as far as the page nine going forward.
So, if you turn to page nine, that Mr. Lang put together, those would be the actual votes you would take, and they're listed in order of page, that I'll just add to, based on your vote, so that the committee can go through this by the page, if you'd like to, if the committee's ready to do that. So, the first page is not listed here, page five in the budget book, so members will go in order, page five would be deleting twenty thousand dollars from the line for school clerks, and Mr. Lang can give you the new bottom line number, if the committee was prepared. We could list all those out, and you could do the vote all at one time?
Sure, definitely.
Perfect.
I'm game, I'm up for that.
So, do you want to read the bottom line for that page?
Sure will. So, the new, I did also, just for your sake, put a copy of the up-to-date budget on your desks, behind these cuts, so you can actually look at the pages if you wanted to. But, the new, page five, under school clerks, the FTE's gonna remain the same, the new line item is a million, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. A new bottom line on page five is six million, four-hundred-and-four thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. So, that would be your vote.
So, that would be the page five, then you go to page six, and where there would be the addition of a 1.0 FTE for English Language Arts, one for mathematics, one for reading at the Merkland, one for reading at the Maury, one for the reading at the Pawtucketville, .5 English ELA reading at Bartlett Community, and .5 English reading at the Pine Arts. So, all of those positions would be additions, and Mr. Lang has the bottom line for that page?
If you just want the bottom line, your FTE's are gonna change to eight-hundred-and-forty-six point five, and your bottom line number is gonna be fifty million, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars.
Then, page seven, two changes, the addition of the art teacher, which is a computer math-art position at the Rogers, and an instructional technology specialist position at the Stocklosa Middle School, so it's the addition of two teaching positions. Mr. Lang, bottom line?
New FTE bottom line, one forty-three point five, and a dollar value of nine million, eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand, seven-hundred-and-ten dollars.
Then, page eight, would be the addition of the twenty thousand dollars under contracted services for the revolving museum, the new bottom line?
New bottom line of two million, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
Give me that figure one more time.
Two million, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
And then, page twenty-two, to restore eight health insurance premiums, because coming with the teachers come their health insurance premiums. So, on page twenty-two, the new bottom line would be?
I'm getting it. It would be fourteen million, five-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars.
And then, page twenty-three, is the reallocation of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city budget to our budget, so it would increase that line item by four hundred and fifty thousand. Mr. Lang?
Seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, seventy dollars.
And then, the last, the last page change would be on page twenty-four, that would be the reduction in the capital improvements line, in order to be able to pay for the additional teaching positions. So, it would be a reduction of a hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars for a new bottom line of?
Three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-ten dollars.
So, I believe if the committee accepted all of that as a recommendation, as a single motion, you would accomplish the final approved, authorized budget for fiscal year '09, and it would be done before July 1st, which is critical.
Yes, and I want to make that motion, and just to quickly to add, the teachers, the additional reading teachers from the Pawtucketville and the Maury are coming out of the capital plan. The reason why we're able to do that is because the Headmaster and Mr. Lang were able to really locate in an area that will have science labs that will be much more cost-efficient than we initially planned, so this is something that, it's a little bit of aggressive, but it's smart aggressive, and Mr. Leahy was very instrumental in pushing for having these two additional teachers added to the, to our program, so I think I definitely wish the committee supports this motion, thank you.
I get it.
I need a second, so.
Second by Mr. Leahy. What's the wish of the body, would you like to vote on this as a whole of each page, as the new bottom line?
As a whole.
As a whole? Mr. Lang, can you give us the exact what we're voting on? I can go page by page, but you have a bottom?
No, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, it matches the city council appropriation of a hundred and thirty-seven million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, eighty-nine dollars.
Okay. Any question on that? Roll call.
I need first and second.
Mr. Leary, Mr.- Mr. Leary, Mr.?
Miss Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
Mr. Leary?
Just quickly, Mayor, there's three items for recommendations we can do at the end, after I read it, I'll just make, I want to plump them all together, if that's okay with the committee.
Sure.
The Finance Committee then took up, discussed three different options, that there's projected financial savings at the end of the year. A motion was made by Ms. Doherty, and seconded by Mr. Leahy, to request the administration provide a list of recommendations for one-time capital purchases related to K through twelve technology upgrades, as well as the high schools' upgrades. That was one motion, and the second motion was security cameras at Lowell High School, motion made by Ms. Doherty, and seconded by Mr. Leahy, to request that the administration prepare formal recommendations reviewed by the Finance Committee in time for action to be taken at the regularly scheduled meeting July 18th, for purchases of additional cameras and door alarms at Lowell High School. And the third was Club Stipens at Lowell High School, motion made by Jackie Doherty, and seconded by John Leahy, to request the Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction review the existing club activity, stipend structure in place at the high school, make recommendations to the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee for adjustments, should they so be warranted. So, those were three recommendations that will be forthcoming at different subcommittees, and at the July 2008 meeting, I make that in the form of a motion for recommendations.
Okay, we have some motions here, I think, that will require a roll call. One is on the, on the cameras, and that's...
I think they're really recommendations, not actually asking for funds. I think, Mayor, what they would do, if there's any public, if there's any money left over at the...
This will have to come forward again.
Yeah, they'll come forward in July or in August, but this is making, what we're doing is asking the specific administration personnel to look at that, make the recommendations of the money. If we do have money at the end of the year, we can buy it at that time if it's so there. Thank you.
And what's the other motions that?
Just a motion to make those recommendations, that the appropriate personnel work on them, and I need to say...
Accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fatacante. All in favor of the report? Signified by saying aye. The report has been accepted and placed on file. Personnel Subcommittee, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. The Personnel Subcommittee, we do not have the written minutes, so I'll just give a brief, a brief report. We did meet earlier this week, on Monday evening, the entire Subcommittee, the entire school committee was in attendance, including the mayor. We did discuss what was an important issue of a recent breach in confidentiality from our recent executive session meeting. I think the committee, and I am very thankful that our committee was able to be extremely candid with each other, and I think very ably assure each other that we have all been schooled on exactly how important executive session is as a legal concept, and I'm really quite confident, as we move forward, that we will not be having this conversation again in the future. Again, I thank all of my colleagues, because I think we all approached this with great seriousness and consideration, and I think that's what allowed us to leave that meeting feeling very confident that we had addressed the issue, that there was no need for any further investigation, that we all felt comfortable moving forward, knowing that we will be adhering to the, to both the spirit and the letter of the law in all of our future negotiations. So, I thank all my colleagues for that, and I would put that in the, as a report of progress.
And the mayor would like to thank you for your leadership on this issue, and...
Thank you.
... convening a meeting and bringing this forward, and the sign has been ordered.
The sign has been ordered.
Motion to accept the report as a report of progress, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? The report has been accepted and placed on file. Are there any other Subcommittee reports? Nothing? Wonderful. Okay, reports of the superintendent?
Yes, thank you. The first report has to do with our summer academic enrichment programs, and I know the committee has been instrumental in asking that we administratively develop some ways to extend the school year for students through summer academic enrichment challenge programs. And so, here you have a brief report about the plans underway for this summer. We're particularly excited about the summer reading program. We got it off to a good start last year, and we anticipate higher levels of participation as more and more students at our elementary and middle schools learn about it. Similarly, in mathematics, we're challenging youngsters and their families with a math problem or activity of the day for the summer, to keep mathematical thinking alive through the summer. You know, research tells us that, that schools that serve large numbers of kids who are, who come from families who are poor, or are learning English, that schools do a pretty good job from September to June, but the falloff during the summer can be quite dramatic, and so this is a low-cost, but hopefully powerful way to keep learning alive through the summer. And then, the report also identifies several of the high school initiatives, where, again, summer reading projects are becoming a more, increasingly important part of the approach. And then, finally, the Step Up Program is also highlighted here. So, I'd welcome any questions about our summer academic enrichment programs, and I thank Deputy Superintendent Franco and her staff for taking the lead in initiating these. The second report is a follow-up to some information that I think was erroneous information that had appeared at one point fairly recently in the newspaper about the flagpoles at Lowell High School. It was erroneous in that it didn't know what was happening, and so here's a report on the plans underway to really beautify the entrance and have the flags take, play, have a more prominent place at the entryway to the high school. The next report is an appreciation for all of the individuals, both students, members of the community, and members of the staff, who contributed to the very successful reception on June 11th for Superintendent-elect Chris Augusta Scott, expressing appreciation for a range of people, including, of course, Director Jim Cook from the Lowell Plan, Tom McKay, Leo Kriegen, and Terry McCarthy from Mill City Management, and O'Connor Studios, Jack O'Connor, and photographer Terry Holt, all of whom contributed mightily to that successful reception. The next report is a quick report on the most, on this year's kindergarten orientation program, more than ninety families attended, and plans are underway to capture more of the information on video for the future, so that we can use the LT, both the school and the community cable channel and other venues to inform parents earlier about the kindergarten program, so that we can also do that in multiple languages, so that we can more effectively engage the diversity of our families. The next report is on the Universal Breakfast Program. We have another school that has achieved state recognition for participation. A three-year study, a study three years ago of Boston Elementary Schools showed a direct correlation between higher MCAS scores and higher participation in the Universal Breakfast Program. So, it's one of the most effective ways we can support our students, is to have them nutritionally ready to learn. And so, the Maury School joins the Lincoln, Washington, Varnum, and McAuliffe as state award winners for achieving over seventy percent, seventy percent participation in the breakfast program. We've got several other schools working on it and trying to, trying to get over that seventy percent. Hopefully, the next one that you'll be celebrating next year will be the Green Alge, which has gotten to sixty-seven percent, so they're just a few percentage points away from hitting that magic seventy percent. The next report is a report that was requested by a member of the school committee, I believe it was Ms. Martin, for an update from our, from the school committee's representatives to the Board of Lowell Telecommunications Corporation. And Mr. Pennard and Mr. Marsh are the school committee's designated representatives, and you have here an update on the status of LTC and its work with the school department. I also note that the City Manager supported the school department's budget this year by upfront allocating two hundred thousand dollars from the cable contract with the city directly to the school department. And that's been very helpful to us, and that translated into our ability to restore some teaching positions. So, we are appreciative of that planful effort by the City Manager. And then, another report requested, I believe by Mr. Leahy, Committee Member Leahy, about the status of all of the daily middle school doors. And so, you have a report from him about the status of that, so that all of the, well, as it notes, new doors have been ordered, and installation is scheduled for the week of July 14th, in those doors that were not able to be made to work, and all of the other entry and exit doors at the daily middle school are functioning properly at this time and are not in need of service. So, the school year next year should start with the daily school having fully functioning doors.
And I really want to thank Mr. Lang, because that's an outstanding job of getting these doors in, because this is just gonna, he made them aesthetically pleasing for the Upper Highlands neighborhood, which I'm appreciative of. Thank you very much, Mr. Lang.
Well, I was particularly, enjoyed the opportunity to insist that Mr. Lang, for the final report written for me as Superintendent of Schools, had to do with the daily doors. He was, he thought that that was a fitting, a fitting report. And then, the report on the request for home education, the list of eligible teachers, and the final personnel report for the school year, you'll continue to get them through the summer, but this is the most up-to-date information on teacher retirements, resignations, and hires since the committee's last meeting. And I believe, I believe that concludes the superintendent reports.
What we're gonna do on, excuse me, on Article Eight, Home Education, why don't we take a roll call vote on that? Motion to entertain, a motion to support the home education by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fatacante. Mr. Leahy?
I was just gonna, do we, can we take them all at once?
We will.
Oh.
This is the one that we have to take a roll call vote on.
All right, I thought we voted on the last two, too.
Yeah, it will. Motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fatacante, to support the parents with the home education program. Any discussion on that? If not, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
Motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Martin, to accept the report from the superintendent on the other nine reports. All in favor of the motion? Signified by saying aye. Any opposed?
I need a first and a second.
Like I said, Mr. Leahy and Ms. Martin.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'll do that one more time. Motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Martin, to accept the other nine reports. Any discussion on the motion? Signified, if not, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye. Those other nine reports have been accepted and placed on file. New business, convention conference request. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I did have one quick question on number four. I don't know if you have that in front of you. My question is, I guess, why we're voting on this? It doesn't seem to be a school-sponsored event. So, are assuming liability for that doesn't seem appropriate?
It is because of the relationship between Gear Up and the, and the high school. It's safer to consider that a school-sponsored.
I mean, aren't they, I mean, we won't have any staff on this trip. It's outside the school year. I mean, I want them to go on it, but I just think it may be, it doesn't seem like this is a Lowell Public Schools trip. My question would be, perhaps if we can get some additional information, we could have it before our July 18th meeting, cutting it close, but with the understanding that they would, you know, they would be able to talk to their actual, and I don't even know who sponsors that.
Ms. Martin, which one are you talking about? The first?
I'm sorry, number four?
Oh, four? Because the first one is, looking at the dates...
It's number four.
Yeah, we...
Oh, but I feel true because both...
I'll be happy to...
Yeah, there's no students involved, just parents.
Well, no, it's four.
No, it's students, thirty-four high schools.
Thirty-four students, but it's...
Oh, okay.
Sponsored by another program, and it's parent chaperones who are going, so we're not really involved in that.
Yeah, I would think that the Gear Up, Gear Up's insurance, I mean, if they're taking this trip, Gear Up better have insurance.
Yeah. I'm sure they do, it's just, you know.
Right.
So, we'll take number four separately, if that's, leave that out, and then you can...
And you know, legally, you know, if we endorse this, or say yes, and...
I know.
Something should, I mean, they're doing this on their own.
Right.
Right. Good point. Okay, why don't we start with number one? When we get to four, we'll discuss.
One through seven, just...
One through seven, accept the report?
Move approval.
Move approval by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor of those six reports? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Those reports have been accepted, placed on file. Now, report number four.
Now, it happens this, the conference, they have to roll call on these. It revolves around it.
Roll call, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
No, Ms. Fatacante.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ms. Fatacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Now, on Article Four.
If I could request that we...
Will you strike it from the...
Strike it from this meeting and request some additional information for our next...
Motion to strike that Article Four from the report, our conference request, seconded by Mr. Leary. Will we, yes, Mr. Leahy?
That doesn't mean that Dr. Bear has to come back in July, does it, to explain this, or? Would you?
I'll do a video.
Okay, like Ms. Doherty, thank you.
John, the light is getting long. Why don't we take a roll, why don't we take a roll call on that, please?
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Ms. Fatacante? Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
Communications, professional personnel. Madam Superintendent, do you want to address that, or?
I just recommend approval.
Approval? Motion to adopt the recommendation from the superintendent by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Fatacante. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Ms. Fatacante? Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Six sheaves, one absent, approved.
Any other things to discuss, bring up, bring forward, before we adjourn? I just want to say that the seventh grader from Selfin, Indiana, was in the mayor's office this past week, last Friday, and this seventh-grade student, each student in their school had to contact every state and do a report on every state. And Katie Portalese from Selfin, Indiana, received so much information from the city of Lowell, from the state of Massachusetts, from the daily school, Franco American School, St. Margaret's School, and there might have been a few other schools, that she was, without a doubt, heads and shoulders above everyone else. And the entire family came to Lowell Friday, and they were extremely impressed with City Hall, and then we took them to St. Anne's Church, they were going over to the Boot Mills, the Hellenic, the Holy Trinity Hellenic Church, St. Patrick's Church, and so forth. And it did me so much, I was so proud to be the mayor of the city when this family came into the city, and they said, "We can't believe the history and the students and the city in general." And it's just another little story in what it is to be the mayor, and what it is to be about the city. And they were going, they went with the students at the daily school. I know they went to the Franco American School, St. Margaret's School, and they spent their entire vacation here. They were going to Boston, and they couldn't thank us enough, because she, one, she was head and shoulders above every student, because the other states, the other communities didn't follow up, they didn't do their job. And this, this city did, and the state did, and I was so happy to entertain that family, they were just amazing. So, that's my report on the pride of the city. Madam Superintendent, once again, it's been a pleasure. We want to wish you the best, and... We want to wish you the best, and may health and Godspeed be with you everywhere, foot of the step of the way, and I know you're gonna stay in education and help children. God bless you. With that said, I'll entertain a motion with Jim by Ms. Fatacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. Thank you very much.